Thank you everyone for coming to the work session of the City of South Fulton. Mr. Clerk, would you call it over?
Mayor William Edwards here. Mayor Proton Mark Baker.
President.
Councilmember Catherine Brown.
President.
Councilmember Carmely Seddon.
President.
Councilmember Helen Zee Willis.
President.
Councilmember Ida Magliar.
President.
Councilmember Rosie Jackson.
President.
And Councilmember Lee.
President.
So Mayor, all members are present.
Okay, so first item.
First item is the presentation by Mr. Mark Sanders, Government Relations Consultant for the South Fulton CID presentation.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor and members of council. Good afternoon. It's a pleasure for me to be back with you today. Y'all have been very courteous to us in the past. And again, my name is Mark Sanders. I'm Government Relations Council for your South Fulton community and suburban district. Your friends, the commercial venture where we come together, the four municipalities, in terms of partnership and leveraging private dollars for infrastructure improvements. We've had a wonderful partnership through the years. These are the seasons of new beginnings here. So my first business tonight is to offer you a confused thank you from your adoption of the cooperation agreements. It's been on the docket. Y'all adopted unanimously back in March. And for that partnership, we look forward to many more years of close association. We thank you for doing that so very, very much. I cannot thank you enough for your courtesies individually. Ever since we've had the cooperation agreement in place, the entire council has been very supportive. Councilwoman Magliar has actually been at every meeting we've had over the last several months. We invite each of y'all to come. We meet that third Friday of every month at Georgia Power off of Oakley Industrial. Mark has been very good to help us tonight. And I also want to commend the city manager and his staff, Mr. Donald's staff, for being very supportive of the CID. Also have with me tonight, your friend and guest and colleague in government service, Mayor Liz Carr Hurst from the city of Fairburn. She's also offered to come tonight and answer some questions. And I'll put her support on behalf of your partners to the South Fulton. We actually have a slideshow that Mark and I have determined as neither one was the author of the PowerPoint. It's automatic, which I think might have been a tool for me to be on time. And so we're going to roll through this, not as fast as the slides are rolling. You actually have the hard copy slides in your tab for the CID presentation. And again, our purpose for being here tonight, we have a specific project that needs your support. It's a park and ride lot located wholly in the city of Fairburn to your south. But as you know, under the CID statute, we need approval from all jurisdictions. And so we wanted to take our time tonight in a very focused work session, answer your questions and tell you a little bit about this innovative project that we bring to you tonight. Just to remember the context of the South Fulton CID, we were formed in 1999. We're one of the oldest CIDs in the state. We're also still one of the smallest, one of the poorest, we like to say, but we did a lot with a little bit of resources. We have three CIDs in South Fulton, which you're all partnering with now through your cooperation agreements. Fulton Industrial, which has been a great, great partner. We've done some work with them in the past. South Fulton CID and Areatropolis, which has some exciting things in the future. And hopefully this relationship really validates these CIDs as effective tools for your community development. We have a total of 212 parcels in the current CID footprint. That's a total assessed value, commercial value of 234 million. And the CID income generated from that tax assessment for just those commercial self-taxing districts is substantial. Was actually funded the CID last year to the $700,000. So you see in terms of assets, we're far smaller than those on the north side, North Fulton, the perimeter area and the Cumberland area, yet we get more money for a buck and a great ROI. We're very good stewards of those tax dollars. To refresh your recollection, the CID you'll see on the slide is basically the area that straddles 85 all the way from 138 down to the city of Palmetto. Oakley Industrial Boulevard, Roosevelt Highway corridors, and the cities are your city of South Fulton, city of Fairburn, city of Palmetto, and the city of Union City. The legacy projects we have brought through the last years, we were the catalyst. We've always been concerned about the diverse nature and the great potential of South Fulton. And from an early standpoint, we were concerned about it being a real live, work and play environment. Having said that, there was substantial early commercial and logistic investment in the district. So we have been very much attuned, as you have been, to segregating that commercial vehicle or traffic, the trucks and the trains, from the people, from the commuters, from the school buses and from the pedestrians. For that reason, the CID basically was founded in 1999 and gave us the big bridge over Oakley Industrial, which spans the railroad tracks. It also gave us the Oakley Industrial Boulevard enhancement, the expansion that made that three lanes and really motors that traffic slightly by the elementary school down on Oakley Industrial Boulevard. We did the signalization at Spence Road at Oakley and also Oakley at 74. And along with this jurisdiction, the other cities and the counties around us were working on the 74 corridor study to have a comprehensive plan, moving that traffic through the 74 corridor, through that brand-new interchange. Again, the CID was the catalyst for the original interstate modification report. It's going to give us a brand-new partial globally, the 74 interchange of the city of South Fulton. You see the maps in your agenda and also on the slide. The project I want to talk to you specifically about tonight is a park and ride lot. And what this is going to do, it's actually located, if you'll notice on the map, on Highway 74, in the city of Fairburn, just south of the existing boundary limits. The red outline on your map is what we have proposed for the CID expansion. The expansion has actually been certified by the Fulton Tax Commissioner, Archfordnan's office. You'll see the stamp and the attachments that are in here. Actually, your packet for approval later tonight in the formal session. That packet's intact. Those tracks will get us down to the site itself is under, is a Georgia power easement. It's the high tension wire, it's right there on 74. There's no other use for this land. We thought it very innovative early on that we could build this park and ride with CID funds largely owned and operated by the city of Fairburn in terms of safety and security, excellent landscape. But this is going to take over 200 cars, peak hours off the roads, off of 74, which is going to be really critical as we, as the entire region looks forward to the upgrades to 74 intersection and on 85 and the 138 realignment with their divergent diamond. Again, the city of Fairburn was responsible for the long-term operation, the cost, the project's fully supported by all the area businesses. We've already passed DOT and all the other regulatory environmental concerns. We've actually made some changes. Kimberly Horn is the consultant, the designer of the park and ride lot. They actually had a change order in the city of Fairburn, thought the project needed to be done right on the very first hand. So they've actually agreed through their largesse of their council to fund some small change order over just over what the CID had already committed to. And again, the land, this is utility easement and only, obviously, the highest and best use is we want it to be something like this that really builds for the future. We're going to have flexibility enough to have transit options out of there. We're really attuned, as we hear this from our board members all the time, some of the largest employers in the region, we're desperately trying to get your citizens and the citizens of the surrounding municipalities to their jobs safely. We've had some pedestrian accidents, I know on Roosevelt. We just have a hard time sustaining the workforce down there. This is very much an economic development project and workforce development. We ultimately could run van pools. We could run direct transit to the, to whatever existing transit we have, the MARTA and the new ATL consolidated system. It can also get people back and forth to the airport. In order to construct the project, we can only expend, we've done the planning and design funds to date. In order for us to expend capital dollars in a capital infrastructure project, it has to be land that's within the CID boundaries. And that's why we have come to you this month with this request that you approve this expansion. We've already got resolutions of approval from the host community, which is the city of Fairburn, city of Palmetto, and the city of Union City. And we're now asking y'all tonight, if you would, to agree to this expansion as well. If you'll notice on, and Councilwoman Magliar has actually pointed this out, we've got this, the backside of the expansion actually touches on a couple of tracks in your jurisdiction. There's also a couple that are residential on the backside. And those commercial projects that are swept in are right now a part of the complex and whatnot, which will not be impacted on the front end of this whatsoever. So again, no residential impact. What it's going to do is allow, we're also, in early stages of planning, an access road that's going to run clear level to 74, which will segregate even better and give you better access to those commercial businesses which front. So if you look at the expansion, I may not be being clear as I'm rambling here, it basically runs one to two tracks off of 74 on those properties. And you'll see in your formal packet, a list of each of those tracks and the acquiescence of all those business owners. The resolution's also in your packet. Again, it's got the approval of the commissioner's office. I'll defer to staff in terms of walking you through those papers this evening, but we're here to answer questions. And again, hopefully this is a project that's got a lot of positive momentum. It's something we've never done before. I know you probably had some concerns about governance. You passed a simple resolution a couple of months ago for expansion of Fulton Industrial that we're aware of and know what went into that as well. The fact that the city of Fairburn has been a longtime part of ours, as has your predecessor, the Fulton County government. Mayor Hurst decided that she would love to come and offer just a brief word, maybe answer some of your questions about the operation pieces and what this means to that portion of the district. So with your approval, please, the council, we'd love to help your progress.
Are you asking the mayor to come up? Clerk? Are you asking?
Yeah.
If that'd be appropriate. Legs up. Have him. Thank you. Madam Mayor?
Good evening. I'm Mayor Elizabeth Carr Hurst, the mayor for the city of Fairburn, Georgia. I come to you tonight to ask for your approval of this resolution. This particular park and ride is located on Highway 74 in the city of Fairburn. It has been fully funded by the CID and the city of Fairburn. Fairburn will be the city that will actually maintain this parking lot. Because of the expansion in that area on Highway 74, we're going to need extra parking spaces, especially if the MARTA is going to start coming down 74. We are looking at building restaurants and different businesses along Highway 74. And we're going to need that parking out there. Because this land was donated to the city of Fairburn and there's nothing that we can do with this land other than put a parking lot there, it's a great idea for our city. And so I come to you tonight to ask for your approval of this resolution in the city of Fairburn. The resolution has been approved by the city of Union City, the city of Palmetto, and Fairburn. And so I come to you tonight as the mayor of the city of Fairburn and ask that you approve this resolution. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor Hurst. I want to acknowledge your city manager's career back there. Wave your hand. City manager of the city of Fairburn. Is there any questions for Mr. Sanders?
No, I'm happy. I had all my questions answered.
That's good. Thank you. All right. Any other questions?
Thanks so very much. Appreciate you.
All right. Next, Mr. Clerk.
Your next item is a presentation regarding risk management made by Brandyon Taylor, Risk Manager.
Good evening, council, and Mr. Mayor and city officials.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, perfect. So once again, good evening, Mr. Mayor and city officials. Once again, my name is Brandyon Taylor, the Risk Manager for the city of South Fulton. I'm here to speak with you today about risk management. Fun times. So the risk management overview is just simply a philosophy that how I approach my job in general. And that's just create a risk aware culture, to act in the city's best interest, to have an open door policy, and to also offer the best customer service possible. To speak on that a little bit, it's viable for us to have a risk aware culture because all of us go about life and there's risk in all of our lives. And creating that awareness will allow us to fix problems. And to have an open door policy, when you see a risk, you have to have somewhere to vent that to. You have to have a place, a person to talk to that issue about, and someone to be the champion to help try to rectify that situation. And in the process, you also want to have customer service because you want that done in a timely manner. So what we do, just to basically describe in a summary of my job, but limited to, we are here to, I'm here to serve the people who serve our community. Firefighters, police, the code enforcement, the city council, and just everyone who does good work for the city of South Fulton. That involves managing the worst compensation, the general liability, the auto liability, and the property damage. Also procuring the proper insurance policies for the city and also making sure that we have appropriate limits to make sure we cover properly on the insurance side. And then also to respond to any risk management and safety inquiries that anyone in the city or the community may have. That's what I'm here for. This is a snapshot of all of the city's insured asset list, just to give you an idea. Things happen in life. Employees, buildings, vehicles, things happen. And you have to have a liaison to properly manage with the insurance company to make sure these claims are handled properly, to make sure the city's not being taken advantage of, and to have that expertise to make sure that we're getting the proper settlements and we're getting the proper treatment for our employees and things like that. And also make sure we get our buildings back up and running as soon as possible with proper quality of work and to get them back where they were from before the accident. So worst conversation reporting, this is just my guideline to when we have an employee loss, the things that I require and like the process that I go through to get a claim from beginning to close. So if it's a life-threatening injury, obviously, you call 911, you seek immediate medical attention as soon as possible. You keep your supervisor informed, you keep me informed, you make sure you track all the worst com data, and you also go to our panel physician. It's important to go to our panel physician because these, they help keep our costs down. If you go to a hospital for a laceration, they'll charge you $5,000. I'm exaggerating. They'll charge you a lot of money to get that fixed. So it's best that we go to places that our insurance negotiated deals with to keep our costs low and to make sure we try to keep our employees working. Auto and property damage reporting, accidents happen. You know, we're in a high-risk job, public safety, it's just high-risk. So things are going to happen. But when they do happen, that's why I'm here, to get the car or the building from the injury date to the fix date, to make that as quick as possible. We don't want to be down vehicles and we have places like fire stations and things like that with that serve our community. We can't allow those fire stations to be down for a specific amount of time. We got to get them back up and running. So this is just letting you know how, I mean, the process that I go through from beginning to end. So I'm big on metrics. Metrics are extremely important because if there's an issue, usually I'll hear word of mouth. Someone will come and say, hey, this is wrong. But with metrics, it allows me to analyze numbers and to kind of pinpoint on other areas that we've been realizing that are wrong by just looking at numbers and looking over year to year and also to give reasons to why maybe, why did our losses, you know, decrease this year? Why do they increase? Have reasons for those. And I mean, that's part of my job is to, is to manage those risks and to try to mitigate them as much as possible. And so, and this is actually a sample of the system that I would like to implement for the city of South Fulton. This is the dashboard and part of some reports that can be provided. So, and it's just good, you know, body parts, cause and nature. So if there's a slip and fall somewhere, what's wrong? But why are there so many slip and falls? How can we fix this problem? So we go about maybe using training or maybe it's a process that needs to be revisited or there's something that that metric can point directly to, give more attention to. Because there's a lot of things going on and there's a lot of moving variables.
So these are not our metrics, these are just, oh, this is official.
Yes, I'm sorry. So the unfortunate, I mean, the beauty of, we're a new city, so we don't have much data. I mean, that's just the unfortunate part about it. But this is just an example, just to give you guys an idea of the things that I'll be looking for, trying to track.
Thank you.
No problem. So safety, so on-site safety visits and self-inspections, those two things kind of go hand in hand. All these things up here mimic the safety grant program that hopefully will be getting the money from soon. So on-site safety visits, it requires me to do two safety visits annually. And then the safety self-inspections will be someone on the ground floor of maybe a fire station who can, who I can work with, who can do self-inspections on a month-to-month basis. And then maybe someone below him can do inspections just to make sure that if there's any issues, we're catching them as soon as possible. There's not issues that are sitting around lingering, you know, we'll catch it when it needs to be caught, or as early as possible. The seatbelt policy is a big one. As we all know, wear your seatbelt, you know, it lowers the risk of a catastrophe. So that's something we definitely want to push to make sure all the city employees who are driving and anyone in the public should be, you know, wearing a seatbelt. Safety meetings, those are times for all of the heads and whoever has any concerns about anything to get together and kind of voice their opinions and for all of us to have different mindsets and to try to figure out different ways to fix the situation. And safety stand-up operation procedures is just how we go about doing things and that's in the process of being worked on as we speak. So safety training, I'm big on training. So we've already completed the emergency response simulator training. We have 40 of our firefighters doing it and we had about five of our PV. Now shout out to Chief View and Chief Rogers for doing it with us and then become certified because it's very important for a train to come from the top box. You know, if firefighters and police see that the chiefs think that training's important and they show it's important to even be involved and take time out of their busy schedules to be involved, then that's going to carry weight with the other firefighters and police. Defensive driving, we are signed up for all the PV and all the fire in August to do defensive driving and then will be pushed out to other city staff and drive and then will be pushed out to all city staff, including city council and Mr. Mayor, obviously. The safety coordinator module is just a training that I'll have to go through in order for us to qualify for the grant. But I mean, like I said, any training is good. So even for me to get different ideas, to talk with other cities, to see what they're doing, to see how they can maybe improve, they'll be a good place for me to go. And safety training videos, our loss control group, LGR RMS, they're the ones who allow us to do the emergency response simulator training, the defensive driving course and, well, not the safety coordinator, but those two components are free. They offer those services because they want us to be a free city. GMA wants us to reduce our, reduce our loss because it impacts them. They're the ones who pay out our claims. And they also offer the safety training videos, and those are free online. So when we have the safety committee meetings and things like that, we can find out this month maybe driving, this month maybe how to pick up things. And we can watch a quick 10-minute video just to keep us all safe to utilize certain techniques that we can maybe get back to our staff. And benefits of safety, it will, it will make the community and our employees safer. I mean, that right there in itself is a good benefit. Buildings can be maintained properly because we're doing constant inspections, we're constantly looking and trying to fix situations and constantly trying to fix any deficiencies within the building. That also allows the city of South Fulton to qualify for safety grants. And then we will fight for a reduction in insurance premiums as we get more data and we're able to go to the insurance company and say, hey, you know, we've seen a reduction in our claims, so work with us to give us a better premium. And just a quick example of our emergency restoration team is Parker Young. And just to give you a quick background, during our time before here, I was at Smithsonian, before there, I was at Five Guys Headquarters. We had five guys, we had a town car run straight through Five Guys. The whole front wall was down. We called, I got on the phone, called our emergency restoration team, and we were back up ready, up and running the next morning at 6:00 AM. They were in their prep room. So that's a burger joint. What if this happens to one of our fire stations who have to respond to our fires? Well, we need a team to come in with plumbers, electricians, general contractors, generators to get us back up and running as soon as possible. And this was a quick example of some of their work from what they did. I believe that was a hurricane and then that's how they got the school back up and running. And that's it. Any questions?
Yes, I see Mrs. Willis, I see Councilwoman Rob, Councilwoman, and you.
Thank you for this presentation. It was very interesting and good. I have a question. I'm glad you believe in metrics. How often will you provide those metrics to the city manager? And then I guess the city manager will be able to provide those metrics to the council?
So for the system, the goal is to have a direct data feed from all of our insurance from our third-party administration, which stands out worst compensation, and from GMA handles all of our liability losses. The system also offers a dashboard and you don't have to sign in and you can see what's going on. So that's something I'll talk with the city manager to see how often he would want those reports, but it won't be hard. And I could even give him access if that's what he wanted, which I'm sure he would, he would want access. But the reports, it's, I have no problem running a report. It tracks, the city tracks myself. And for me, you know, metrics just shows, sometimes people don't like to, that risk points out problems, but I look at different, that risk helps fix problems. Because if you didn't have this metric to point out something, something could be worse and then a loss could be even worse from there.
So when do you anticipate this going live on this, on this system?
We're still working on that. Once it's, once it's purchased, and I know there's a lot of moving pieces and priorities for the city, so once it's, I mean, I don't have an exact time, but I do know that it's an agile system. So once we get the system, while they're working on it, we can be using it.
Is that something that we are invited for?
So we are actually working through the process to attain that system now. We just didn't have it before Mr. Taylor got here. It should be in place, I think we're looking at it in the next 60 days, but we got to go through the process with the actual company that's been selected. So after that, I don't know if you know this, but he reports up to Mr. Malazi. And so some of these decisions are being made a little bit above his stance. And so we're looking at a 30-day reporting process, although some of those items, it takes about 45 days. So we look to report out to council quarterly.
One of the things I'm interested in finding about, what kind of insurance are we looking at, policies to deal with any IT breaches or anything relative to information technology?
Sure. So luckily, GMA offers us free insurance for cyber up to a certain limit, but we also can increase that limit because as we know, you know, it can get quite pricey. But we do have it in place as we speak. It's just about if it's adequate or not. And that's something I've been talking with IT and just working out to see if we want to increase or if we're at a good level right now. But we do have it in place right now.
Councilwoman Rob.
I have a few questions. I think we need to answer one of them. Are you using smart solutions when you're managing these type of risk incidents? Are you looking at better practices instead of just doing the same old thing that Fulton County does in the past? Are you looking at smart solutions?
I'm not 100% familiar with smart solutions, but I'm not, I didn't come from Fulton County.
Well, we passed, we passed a resolution that whatever equipment or things that are needed, upgrades, that we will be looking into smart solutions to foster better outcomes. So that's what I'm asking. Are you looking, how do you manage, you know, those incidents? Are you looking at best innovative practices?
Yeah, I mean, I think every city is different. So some of the things, the system, I don't think Fulton County uses, some of the trainings that we're doing, I don't believe that they, I don't think that they have been using those trainings also. So I mean, those are the things that I'm going by and really learning my environment and then figuring out the best way to go about rectifying the situation.
Okay. And currently, is there a repository of where you hold this, the current information or?
Right now, I'm just doing my best. We have, there's paper reports and then also use Outlook to manage most of the claims.
But you all are developing some SOPs around?
Yes, yes, yes.
And you said to effectively do your job, you probably will need this dashboard and this software. Have you priced it or you know how much it's going to cost?
Yes. Yes, so, yeah, so I've done three demos, um, the offer for this current system, I, I got the price cut in half by working with them. Um, so, and it's at a, it's at a good price. I've asked neighboring cities what they pay and they pay significantly more. Um, so I, I would say it's a good deal.
Okay, uh, Councilwoman Gill.
Um, I just want to thank you for your presentation. It's short, sweet, to a point, and it's a lot of information. It is, thank you. Um, I do have a few questions, um, and I don't know if you're the one to answer or the city manager to answer. So I'm going to go back to the, the asset list. And on the asset list, I see that we have one precinct and I was wondering what happened to the Cascade Road, uh, precinct? Did we get that one or didn't?
That's not considered a precinct, it's, uh, considered a, uh, fire station. And so while we will, which, which part are you?
There's a police, there's a police.
I think it's, it's, it's a fire, I think it works both, but I think it's considered a fire.
Yeah, it's considered a fire, it's in that.
Yes, it's in the, it's in the fire.
So the, the police, it's a fire station and next to the fire station is a police precinct on Cascade Road.
But it's one facility, so we consider it fire.
I see. So the one facility is in the fire station, though?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so that, that gets to my next question. And my next question is, there are twelve fire stations this year. How many did we have at Fulton County? Um, was it twelve? Was it fifteen? What was it? How many did we have and how many did we get?
Only one station we did not transition over and that is the one that is still a part of the, uh, the airport. Yeah, uh, forget the name of the facility, but that's home to the airport. Uh, and we're actually working with Fulton County now to be able to provide services out of that facility as well.
Um, and then the last one is the city vehicles, eighteen. So I'm assuming that those are code enforcement and parks. Is that just it?
No, so this presentation is actually done before parks, um, transitioned or submitted then. Those would be considered, I would call them solely, uh, code enforcement. That is, uh, uh, our pool, we'll just call it pool vehicles, uh, for the city. So general use vehicles that go across everywhere except for police and fire.
Those are my only questions.
Any further questions? Thank you. So, thank you, guys and ladies. Have a good day.
Next presentation.
All right, your next presentation is a presentation on the comprehensive plan and its next steps presented by Community Development Services Interim Director Shay LaRue.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm so excited to be here and tell you about the comprehensive plan and the next steps. I know that you all have anxiously waited for this moment and I wanted to have the opportunity to let you know the next steps coming forward. Okay, so May eighth, we had a very brief discussion on what a comprehensive plan is. Um, we spoke in regards to it being a five-year plan. Um, we spoke in regards to it being Fulton County's twenty thirty-five comprehensive plan that has since transitioned into the city of South Fulton's twenty thirty-five comprehensive plan. Because we have that twenty thirty-five comprehensive plan, we have received our qualified local government status. That qualified local government status allows for us to be able to qualify for such local funding, um, at a state or federal level, just depends. Um, the way that it makes us qualify in regards to that is that because you have planned for such projects, those funding opportunities see that you're being aggressive about how you're planning for your funding usage. So they're going to be more than likely to provide that funding over to you. Awesome. So your comprehensive plan, really briefly, uh, speaks on a number of chapters or areas, um, in the comprehensive plan. In the last meeting, we spoke on that. However, I would like to bring to your attention that it would be great if you could focus very heavily on particularly the land use component of the comprehensive plan for such edits. Coming up here, I found that the land use, um, component has been your concern. A lot of times when I'm making recommendations on rezonies, it has been your concern that maybe that's kind of going in a direction that the city of South Fulton would like to go into. So I'm asking that you spend a lot of time looking at the land use component and see that that is in fact where you're planning to go with the city of South Fulton. For the implementation plan, there may be an opportunity where changes are going to go there as well and I'll speak greater detail to that in a second. So for land use, yet again, um, it identifies how we're seeing or guiding the future for the land use of, of the city of South Fulton for the next twenty years. Uh, it focuses very heavily on residential, commercial, and industrial. So again, when you're reviewing this plan, we're asking for you to go into that chapter, look in your districts, understand whether or not that is the direction you're wishing to go into. If you're seeing an area that's zoned or proposed to have a certain zoning in the next twenty years that you're not in agreement with, that is something that you can know in your changes. As I mentioned before, the implementation plan, so there is a finance piece attached to this portion. And I would like for you to look at that just to make sure that you are in fact adopting this plan. Um, again, that came from Fulton County, so if you would like to have those pieces taken out, that is definitely something that you can look into and will probably have opportunities to edit that on the planning level as well. So what's next? Tonight, I will be sending you the copy of the comprehensive plan and a template for how you are to submit your edits. It's very simple. It's going to be Excel spreadsheet that'll give you identification of what page, what your concerns are on that page, where you're wanting to see changes. And from there, we're asking for you to have that file completed and return back to us on the fifteenth of June. From there, staff is going to be aggressively spending the next week working primarily on this file. Where we're receiving your info, where we, once we receive it, we'll then take you that and create recommendations. And then we're going to begin presenting that back to you on June twenty-sixth to identify where you've made a suggestion or recommendation and how we're planning to support that by providing information or identifying if the plan already has those recommendations. So that brings me to any questions that you may have?
Uh, I saw this was, hang in, just give me a minute, I think I saw, Mr. Lee. Did I miss anyone?
Did I, did I miss something? I know our residents asked to have input. Are we not going back to residents and going to rest?
So that's a brand-new plan. And if you want a brand-new plan, that's something that will start completely over, which means you would have to open it up for public involvement, public input, that would create a brand-new document that will put you at a brand-new start, which is including financing as far as funding the project as well.
So here's my concern. Even when you all did the twenty thirty-five comprehensive development plan, I remember when you all went through that process, there was very little participation from residents. There was a lot of mix-up with the meetings because I came to a meeting and it was canceled, it was some kind of mix-up here at this location. And it was supposed to be rescheduled and me, as a resident at the time, I wasn't any elected official, I was a normal resident and I never was notified on when there was going to be another meeting. So that was a process, this, the process I wanted to participate in and never got an opportunity to participate in. And so now that we are a new city, I am very, very concerned that we are moving forward with the plan that our residents are saying consistently that they did not have an opportunity to get input in.
Okay, so in regards to that, back in twenty sixteen, I'm, I'm not aware of you missing a meeting. Um, in twenty sixteen, there were at least eight meetings held for the public and it was advertised, it had a, uh, large component of, of turnout and I know that because I was working for Fulton County at that time.
Okay, are you there? Ms. Willis?
Yes, I am.
Okay, uh, Councilwoman Gill.
I have a few questions. Um, we're talking about making revisions. And so my first question is, what is the difference between a minor revision, an in-between revision, and a major revision? And what I mean by that is, a minor one would be, we would just tweak a little bit, um, the land use. A major one would be, it would really affect the map. Cause we'd move something around where the map would have to change. So that's my first question. What's the difference? What's the difference between those and then what do they impact? How do they impact the plan?
Okay, all right. So a minor edit would be something that would not change the focus of the plan. Um, it would be something, and I can't go into great detail as to what's one over the other. It's just major would be something that would cause the plans going in a totally different direction than what it would be going into, where it'd be more considered to be like a drastic change. Like what we're seeing, for example, the public, um, let's just say if the public involvement is, is included, as you mentioned, the public would want a brand-new plan or a brand-new focus or a brand-new plan in a brand-new direction, that would be considered to be major. So minor would be you're using the exact plan that you have, you're going in and finding areas that instead of it being, um, this area is, I guess, proposed to have a certain level of density, you're just making a, a slight increase in density versus you're changing it from residential to completely turn it into industrial, for example. A complete change, um, necessary versus just increasing density or just kind of reshifting things. So it's just a matter, I couldn't necessarily answer that until I got an example, then I continue to do it, that's considered a major one.
Okay, so I'll give you an example.
Okay.
What about if, um, if the plan says that residential and industrial can be a half a mile from each other and we would like to change it to two miles?
So that's a zoning thing. That's not comprehensive plan.
So, give us an example of what a land use change is for the comprehensive?
Right, that's why I was mentioning that it could re, you're looking to rezone something or change the use of something, or you're used, looking at changing an entire corridor from one thing to the other, for example. Like you're used to, you're seeing it as commercial in one area, but you're wanting to drastically change it over to agricultural where there's pretty much no developments happening. So it's kind of one of those things where it's kind of situational based, but if you bring me something as an edit, we determine at that time if it's in fact a major edit.
Can we change the zoning law? What was the question?
Um, the zoning ordinance is a little bit more extreme, so it's something that can be changed. You can definitely recommend in your comprehensive plan to have that as one of the major projects that you're having coming up in the short-term work program and that will be very supportive.
Um, so what is the final due date before submitting the revised plan to the Department of Community Affairs? Cause we have to send it to them, right?
So we're going to send it to them. They've already approved the plan. Let me first say that the plan has been approved twice. It's been approved by Fulton County, it's been approved, excuse me, approved for Fulton County and approved for the city of South Fulton. With that being said, the state has not only seen this plan once, but it's seen it twice, which means they, they have reached this plan going in the direction that it's going into. Um, so whenever we make those edits, they're going to review it again for the third time or look at it for a third time and get their, their concerns or their narratives and so forth. But that'll be something they'll provide a comment back to us if they're thinking we're going in the right direction yet again.
Can we change the stakeholders? Cause the stakeholders, um, were included in twenty sixteen when we were not sitting.
Those same stakeholders. Um, most of our population is still the same, we have the same boundaries.
We do, but we still might want to change the stakeholders and have our input into who we might want to have to be stakeholders. But it goes back to something that Councilwoman Willis said because I attended those meetings and they were very sparsely attended.
Okay.
And so the community might want to have a say-so and we might want to have a say-so in terms of who, what stakeholders we would like to have. So is that an item that we can change?
So that sounds like a brand-new plan. So if you want that, you know, to involve the public and have more of a change in stakeholders, that involves a different angle than where we're going. So that involves something that necessarily would include, um, starting from the beginning, involving the public and creating a brand-new plan and, and yet again, that would include some different funding elements attached to that.
So, this is my last question. So when can we prepare a brand-new plan?
So right now, the state has recognized that you have a plan and that you wouldn't be expected to have a new plan until twenty twenty-one. So we'll begin working on that for twenty twenty. However, if you would like to work on a brand-new plan, that is something that we can discuss to see when you would propose to have that adopted. So it's more so if you want to have that collectively, you tell us that you want to start over, then that's something that we'll just have to go into and identify the funding mechanism as well.
So there, so there is no requirement in terms of twenty twenty-one is not the requirement for when we can do a new plan. We can really prepare a new plan anytime we want, correct?
Twenty twenty-one is, is the time that the state has recognized the city of South Fulton to need a new plan for adoption for twenty twenty-one.
Ms. Lee? Um, could we go back, could we go back to the timeline?
Yeah.
Um, first, how many pages is the comp?
Um, it's roughly over, say about, let's see. It's a bit over, duh-duh-duh-duh-duh, it's not a hundred and forty-ish pages. But that would not be a full plan to be, not changing every piece of it, so.
Right, right. Um, yeah, so I'm, I, I want a different timeline. If, I feel like ten days is not enough time for me to make edits and send them back. And, and I also, I'm not a planner, you know, I don't have that. And, uh, what I would really like is to be able to sit with you and discuss edits before I send them in. Um, how can we get out of this timeline? Are we stuck with this timeline? Is there, is there some reason that this needs to be done by June twenty-sixth or can we take it or not?
Well, we.
I think, I think council members, what, uh, uh, Ms. Reed is kind of referencing is, our last meeting, actually our last two meetings, where we had a work session on this, is that it's a continual process. So these edits are not your final edits to the comp plan at all. So because to get all of you guys in a room and get consensus, it has to be public. So the first thing is, as she mentioned in the last council meeting, she's bringing back this process to you. The second thing is to give you time to do initial edits. At those initial edits, it gives staff the level of insight necessary to know what you as a group want to change about the comp plan. They, right now, they're fairly clear that it is land use, which is one of the big areas that you guys are concerned about. But in addition to land use, there are also different nuances that people have asked and have questions about. So through this time where you're looking at your edits, it may not only be edits to the plan, it might also be you providing questions that you have about the various sections. So then staff has enough time to get together, respond to your insights and have another work session where you're actually being productive over a period of time. So it's not just make your edits, we take it and then we rush you through a comprehensive planning process. It is a continual process to get feedback from council in the appropriate public setting.
Right, so I hear that. Uh, my concern is, and I will just be honest, I haven't looked at the comp plan. I wasn't aware that we had adopted a comp plan until a couple of weeks ago, when it turned out we had adopted a comp plan. And so now I'm going to get this filed tonight and I have ten days to make edits, which gives me no time to be with anyone in my community. I would rather, I would rather spend the entire month of June, um, and have that time to maybe have a district meeting with my community, uh, for us to look at it together so that we can make edits together. Cause I represent a community of people, so I don't want to, I don't want to make edits without doing that. And then I also would like, even as I hear, um, Councilwoman Gill ask questions, I'm not clear what things I am allowed to edit or, you know, how much the edits can be. So I, like, I, I don't want to just be given this two-hundred-page document and then ten days to make edits where I can't talk to, um, my planner or to my constituents. So I'm, I'm begging us to take at least till the end of the month to just do the first part and then we can do the next parts in July.
I mean, I don't think we see a problem with that, I'll tell you. In our pre-game meeting, we seen my council was very urgent to move forward on moving this comp plan piece together. And so if we heard that incorrectly, we don't have a problem moving back to, let's say, the June twenty-sixth piece. If that's what you're requesting to just review it, you coordinate with your public, you do all of those things and then bring back suggested edits. I would also say there is a public engagement portion to this process as well. And so I think what staff was attempting to do is to get your feedback first. And so I think what staff was attempting to do is to get your feedback first, so that we can understand how to proceed appropriately. And so, if you would like to do your personal feedback and the public engagement process at the same time, we're open to that as well. So if that's what, if that's what the consensus of the council is, you would just have to give us that guidance. Because I think we received it differently initially.
Right, so, so I would say, I think initially we were in a rush to get to a comp plan because we thought we didn't have one.
Right.
Um, and then when we realized, now that we realize that we do have one and it's already been adopted twice, uh, I think that we want to slow things down. I think that is the pleasure of the council. I, I would also ask that we be able to, um, that each one of us individually, so this doesn't have to be a, um, this doesn't have to be a work session where we're scheduling yet another meeting, cause we already have three meetings this month. But, um, if we could schedule individual meetings with Ms. Reed to go over our section of the comp plan, ask all of our questions, and just take a little bit more time. I think that, is that the, may I ask, is that the pleasure of the council that we do that? Yes, okay.
Uh, Ms. Jackson?
So ma'am, if that is the case, I think we need some time to reevaluate the proposed schedules. Because, I mean, you know, Director Reed is, is one person who has a fairly small staff. So to meet with eight different people while she also has other day-to-day activities in addition to this, I think we just need to come back to the table. And I don't think we have to do it in a meeting. We can provide a, uh, what do you call it? Uh, we can work with the clerk to, uh, poll council and whether it's determinative meetings or however it is. But we probably need to bring back, uh, a less aggressive schedule.
Okay, uh, Ms. Jackson?
Um, I think, um, Ms. Reed, at our meeting, you found out, I, I agree with Councilwoman Willis. At that meeting, most of, uh, the individuals there, and our, the room was full. And I know you had told them that you had had a meeting at Verdant. However, I think it was about ten or fifteen people there, if that, at the meeting that you had had prior to. But what I'm saying, they expressed concern to you. They are interested, they want to be a part of the planning. Because right now, you know, we have a lot of concerns about things that are being placed in our neighborhoods that we had nothing to do with. So, um, we know where we want to go, because we already, they, they told me that they wanted to do a moratorium. We've done a survey, uh, they want a moratorium as far as the zoning piece, so we know where we want to go. We've had one meeting, uh, the comprehensive plan, um, is what I think you had told us before, that you can meet with us individually. Uh, so I think I'm hearing something different now from, um, the city manager.
No, no.
Well, I think what, what we were under, under the impression that you wanted us to go a little faster than, than we were going. So I believe, if I'm not mistaken, we were speeding it up so that we can aggressively move in your speed, is what we were thinking. As the city manager mentioned, we must have misunderstood that, and we can now make that amendment to that, um, timeline, moving forward.
Well, let me ask you something. How was the other comprehensive plan funded?
Um, at that particular time, they, um, hired one planner to draft the plan. That was that, that planner's only role at that time. So, it was a little different.
So it was higher, that person was on staff?
Mm-hmm.
Move on. So, what did A R C say, what sixty-five?
I'm into Jackson.
Okay. Councilwoman Rob?
Um, I think, um, having read the plan a couple of times, I probably wouldn't necessarily have to spend additional sixty-five thousand. But I do, um, think in terms of getting feedback from the council in terms of this additional document, you know, getting in, input on the document that you plan to send out, this is a good start. If the second part of this timeline, I think, addressed how the public will be engaged once that information is come out, I think that's really where you're hearing, I'm sorry to dismonitors in a way, but I think taking that information and the, this timeline really addressing how, once that's put together, how we engage community that way, that's the councilman. Khalid doesn't have to try to ramble in his timeframe to try to pull that together. Um, I think it's kind of really likely this in the mark. If, if you could speak to that process, how you kind of envision it after all this has come out? Cause I don't think this is unreasonable if the second part involves a series of meetings to get additional input from the public.
Well, I believe if I, if I'm not mistaken, we're asking to have some time to come back to you with that. So I think at this moment, we're, we're asking to have an opportunity to weigh those options and present that information back to you at a later time.
Always. So ma'am, is it possible that when, when, um, staff goes through the comprehensive development plan with the respective districts on the areas that, uh, is relevant to the districts, that we can, if we can do it where we have like a, a work session or town hall with our district? And that can, that will involve the community?
Oh, absolutely. So, I think the initial plan was, again, just to get feedback from you guys on the front end of that, and then host, uh, the public, uh, I guess, feedback sessions. And that way, you'd be able, you know, very simple in order to what you're discussing. Now, I'll tell you, we looked at, uh, I guess, the calendar to be able to get it done in a greater timeframe. But I think what we've also heard from council is that instead of you providing feedback first, you really want to do it collaboratively with your districts. And I don't think that's a problem. And so if we can just spread the timeline out, I think we had looked at doing it over somewhere between sixty and ninety days. And so, we can make that sixty and ninety days all in one, you know? Where you're able to do it collaboratively and not individually, not outside of the public process.
If you, I would encourage you to go back and look at the A R C training video, um, when they came and presented to council. And you would get an understanding of why this council was blindsided about the adoption of this plan. Because we asked very specific and pointed questions about what it would cost for us to redo the plan, having, um, input. And so, all of us were under the impression that we were gonna have the opportunity. So I asked, and this was done before you got here, A R C came and they did a training. And please look at that video and listen to the questions that we asked and what was told of us.
I'll tell you, you guys are one-hundred percent on the same page. Literally, I had this conversation with Councilmember Gilliard two days ago, maybe, where she and others have also given me this history before. And it is actually why we went back, um, to the state. And so I, I mean, on camera, I'll say this, is that there was a discrepancy in the information that you were provided and the information that staff had. And instead of, you know, staff saying something and council saying it's not true, and us trying to figure out what the issue is, what we did is went directly to the state. We said, here are our ordinances, these things have been passed, what does this mean for us? Now, I was hopeful that they would give us some guidance and come back and tell us something. And instead, they issued us a letter and told us what it meant. And we received the, the, uh, qualified government status, which, which I do think is a positive. But what it means is, is that that ordinance that was passed, and I think it might have been one of the first five ordinances that you ever passed, it is something, or, or second that was ever passed. Now, new council members, new city, things had to happen to be put in place. And it may have been a, uh, an unintended consequence. But, staff was not incorrect. And I don't know if, I wouldn't say the A R C was wrong. I would say they didn't have all of the information about the ordinances that you passed. But when you did pass it, based on what the state says and how they operate, you did accept the comprehensive plan. And so, again, before I got here, I have nothing to do with those decisions, et cetera, et cetera. Don't have all of the info, but that is just the facts around it.
Um, let me say this. Some documents in government, I just live and breathe in documents. They don't never close down. They're always evolving and always changing. I want to put that out there because I think that is the bottom line of what all these comments are about. Uh, I'm hearing that maybe some people thought that there is an X date that you have to do this, and before, it's not that way. This is a live and breathing document that can be changed at any time. The second thing I would like to charge you with, Mr., uh, Mr. McDonald, is that, let's look at what she's already provided, okay? And then I would like to see a, a time limit. I mean, a time limit. That includes what Mr. Khalid said, what they said about public, uh, involvement. And we don't have to rush, ladies and gentlemen. We don't have to rush. So if there's any, any, any matter of fact that why you didn't know something had happened, or, let's stop here. Get a timeline, let's agree to that timeline, give it Mr. Khalid and others time to look at the documents and find out where we are. So I would challenge you to, to, to get that timeline pulled together strategically to get it done. And last thing, I'm gonna say this. Make sure, when it comes to public participation, that we advertise in every vehicle in the country. Because I'm gonna tell you, some people say they miss meetings, stuff like that. For fourteen years, you know, that it ain't never been overwhelmingly attended. And we would go, as a commissioner, I would go to people and say, you know, one of the biggest things y'all could do is come to a land use plan meeting. If you come to a land use plan meeting, you don't have to be out there with the red t-shirts picking it all the time. All right? So, I just want to make that calm because, clear, because we got to get the people in. We can have that documented strategic plan, uh, Mr. Khalid. But we got to get the people from your district, get everybody's district, and let them know how important the land use plan is to come in and do it. So once we do it, the communication's got to be here.
So I, I guess my question for the council is, if we have a meeting on the twelfth, would it be acceptable to the council to allow us that time to be able to bring back a, uh, proposed, uh, schedules that you guys can accept and approve, and then we can move forward from there?
Uh, can the twelfth what?
The twelfth of June, the next schedule.
Was that gonna be time to read the document?
No, no, no. It's, it's for us to come up with a timeline-
Oh, I got you there, oh, I was saying.
-that you can approve for us to be able to move forward with the process.
Okay.
And so the council will be able to, that we can make that happen.
Uh, she needs to send the plan to everybody.
I'm sorry, would you still like it?
Yes.
Yes, she just sent the plan to everybody.
Ms. Reed? Yes. Um, I would like for, I just, just to be abundantly clear, we can make a motion, I don't know if we need to make a motion or take a vote quick. I would like for the first step of this process, this month, to have an individual meeting with Ms. Reed about the plan. I would like to sit with her in the room and just talk, through the plan.
Yes, I, I think scheduling meetings, I mean, that's not the, the, the hard part. That doesn't take, uh, active Congress or anything of that nature. I, I think, so you gotta want to do individual meetings, you do individual meetings. I think what, what we're saying though is, this is just our, our original proposed schedule. You would like, uh, a longer period of time, but you also want public engagement and, uh, additional council feedback to happen at the same time. We do have to plan that along with their workload. So, we need you guys to approve that timeline. And so the, the request that does take, uh, your, your finalization is for us to be able to bring back this timeline and you approve it, so that we can move forward in that manner moving forward.
And, and, and so, what I would offer is, once, once I have that meeting in July, like, I will get with District Six and we'll have a public meeting. So I don't want you to feel like you have to organize all of that.
If we don't, that doesn't have to be a part of it. I think what it does, though, there are steps to approve of this process. So, how long are we going to have of a public comment window? How long are they gonna have to draft and edit? How long for research? So, we have to put together a timeline that we can stick to, to be able to deliver the plan in a certain period. To be able to stick to that timeline, we need you guys to approve it, so that they can manage their work. Because this is one of many activities that they have to coordinate.
And then, and then just, and lastly, before I relinquish, I, I also want us to keep in mind that July, uh, we need to start working on our budget. And so, that is just, that's just a huge thing. And I'm, I'm not sure if, 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 if my, if my choice is to spend the month of July having public meetings about a comp plan or having public meetings about a budget, I want to talk about the budget.
So we would actually be on the phone. And so that, that is, I think we address an inch piece now. Got an upcoming work session that will actually address the budget. And so, and that proposed process, and it has to be delivered, there's statutory guidelines related to those activities as well. So I think we're well positioned for that. But I don't want to conflate the two, cause it's not a either, or, it's a both.
Ms. Khalid, I think that the charge I made here encompasses that whole, that you mean. Okay, let's have Ms. Gilliard and Dr. Baker.
Real quickly, um.
Did you make a problem?
Real quickly. Uh, we started out by, um, talking about land use. Uh, and there are other areas under, um, the elements. And so, suppose that we want to talk about environmental or transportation. If we want something in those areas, uh, are we able to, um, make modifications in those areas? Or are we just focused on land use and that's all?
Correct, so when I made that comment, I said I recommended that you focus very heavily on land use. So that means that you can make amendments in, in other areas where you see necessary.
Yes, Ms. Gilliard? Mr. Baker?
Yes, I, I think my question is more so towards the city manager. What would be our mode of edifying, uh, the public or reaching out to our communities? You know, and, um, we've been a city for over a year. We haven't done a robo-call, a mailer, flyer, anything to citywide, to our constituents, to let them know. Because the man makes a good point when he says that we haven't, that people don't come out and most of these meetings are poorly attended, but we haven't done anything to actually let people know.
Well, so I think we're gonna use a variety of different things. I mean, there, I don't know why certain things have not happened before, so I don't answer any of those past questions, because that's just not in my purview. But, we haven't leveraged P S A previously. We can now, and so we've already had conversations with the various radio stations and television companies. We've got, uh, our own newsletter now that started off with about two thousand, I think, four-five-hundred, now it's grown. And so, we have a bunch of different mediums, and I would say we would leverage them all. Uh, we also asked the council for some, uh, funding to coordinate communications. Now, you mentioned that we have not done mailers and robo-calls and things of that nature. There are costs to those things, and so while this comprehensive plan is extremely important, we're balancing those with our other responsibilities. We have to make some decisions on how we want to coordinate on F I B. We've got to make some decisions on, we've got, uh, the, the tax issues that are coming up. Sanitation, I mean, there are a variety of different things. So, right now, I'm not sure if, if is the appropriate time to go through all of them, seeing as how we have fifty-one minutes left to the end of the session. But we will use a variety of mediums, uh, within budget as appropriate.
I think it'd be less than sixty-five thousand dollars though. And if we can-
Not for everything.
But I guess what I'm saying is, if we're talking about TV, uh, newsletters, P S A's, radio, I think it would come under sixty-five thousand dollars if we're gonna consider bringing in somebody else. So at least we could have at least the public coming way in on what it is we already have.
So again, I don't disagree with that. I think when I said something about the actual seventy-five thousand dollars, it is not seventy-five thousand dollars for this endeavor. It is seventy-five thousand for all endeavors.
You're misunderstanding me.
Okay.
I was speaking about the sixty-five thousand dollars, and we were talking about in reference to, uh-
Oh, for the additional, got it, got it, yeah, yeah. So we've, we've talked about, about that process as well. And so, I think sometimes when you ask for something in your budget, so you ask for sixty-five million dollar budget, you're, we are not expecting to spend all sixty-five million dollars that's in this current budget. You want to deliver high-quality service on time and within budget. And so, the sixty-five thousand, I think that's allocated is kind of the ceiling. And so, that's the number that is there.
Good, Mr. Baker? Okay, Councilwoman Jones?
Director Reed, I, I think we answered the majority of my questions through, uh, general conversation. But, just one thing that I'm not clear about, when we get the comments back to you, you and your staff will vet the comments that we're putting, and how long will that take, or is that a tedious process? How will that work, and what does it look like?
So, um, believing that we will receive a decent amount of comments from you all, um, the team was planning to go away, literally somewhere in the building, spend time focusing directly on comprehensive plan. Uh, we already began kind of shifting our calendars and working on some things and trying to assist and making sure this was a priority. Because we wanted to ensure that you understood that this was a priority to us. So, when taking that information in from you all, we would literally come up with each recommendation that you mentioned, we're first gonna identify the plan, already states those areas of concerns. those areas of concerns, and we'll identify where that is. And then, if it doesn't, we'll make suggestions on where they could go and then provide the language that could go into that. Which is what the June twenty-sixth meeting was going to be, us presenting what you said as a recommendation and what we found and what we're recommending it to state whenever those ideas are made. So, that's what that presentation would have looked like.
Okay, and that would probably take pretty much two weeks, actually?
Um, we were gonna make it work for a week, but I mean, if it could take two weeks, that's fine as well.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, all right. Let, let the council, okay, we do have his name and his station, his innovation, his personnel. Uh, next, next presentation.
Your next agenda, I was being presented by Mr. Antonio Valenzuela from Fulton County, Deputy Director of Transportation. A presentation regarding Campbellton Fairber Road and Jones Road and Stonewall Tail Road. This is regarding a special local option sales tax project.
Mr. Valenzuela.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I would like to introduce the director of our work at Punt here, and the designer of the project, Mr. Tom Frabel with American Engineers, and Christina Berry with Georgia DOT.
Uh, Jones. The first one.
Okay, you told me this was the first one, that's why I asked, did you have other ones?
Yes, please.
You changed.
Is that one?
Uh, yes. I, I would like to start saying that, uh, subject project, Campbellton Road at Jones, the Campbellton Fairber Road at Jones, at Jones Road intersection, is a needed project that was perhaps for attention, but in different distances. That's the reason why it was selected in two thousand sixteen as part of this project. When developing the, the project, our consultants addressed the intersection, the traditional intersection, by doing a, a signal intersection with existing, uh, four-way stop intersection and allocation. Knowing that Campbellton Road and Fairber Road is stair route, we needed to have an approval from Georgia DOT. The project design at a substantial level, it is, uh, budgeted, uh, uh, amount of one million four sixty-four thousand, and the number of parcels that would be required would be approximately ten parcels, and it will be funded and it is presented with T-Splat. And the estimated construction date for that project, it was approximately, uh, two thousand nineteen. But, as stated, we couldn't move from the conceptual phase to the program design because it's a stair route. And each project that is in a stair route, it has to have an I-2 report. A few facts that we found when we did, when our consultants did a study on the concept of the project. Traffic engineering study analyzed the, the traditional intersection of a traffic signal. The warrants only made at seventy percent for two thousand eighteen. However, it failed in two thousand, in two thousand thirty-seven as a two-lane road, roadway due to being over capacity. So, we went ahead and met with Georgia DOT and explained to them what the community wanted, the desire of community and the desire, uh, the desire of the project. Georgia DOT state that the state would not consider a traditional intersection along a state highway, if the proposed signalization does not meet MBTCD full weight betrayal at one hundred percent. The county, before proceeding with the project, met with the, uh, head public information of the house on December fourteenth, two thousand eighteen. We had about fifty-four attendees, sixteen residents were support of the project, one opposed, fifteen were in favor of a traffic signal, and three favored the roundabout. Georgia DOT proposed a two-lane roundabout. Georgia DOT staff studied both intersections on Campbellton Fairber Road and Jones Road and Campbellton Fairber Road and DeGoon Road, an intersection that's just a few, uh, hundred feet of, of Jones Road. GDAC concluded that the roundabouts were warranted at both intersections and would not consider a traditional signalized intersection at this location. So, discussing with Georgia DOT, I have met with them at different locations with our consultants and the experts that our consultants have as the traffic engineers. We came up that with advantages, the roundabout had been demonstrated to be safer than, than all forms of a grade intersection. National safety analysis has shown roundabouts have forty-four percent overall decrease in crash, eighty-two percent decrease in injury and foul crashes. Why, why? Seventy-five percent fewer conflict for roundabouts. Traditional intersections have thirty-two conflict points, have high speed and high angle injuries, crashes. Roundabouts, eight points, uh, eight conflict points, low speed and low angle crashes. The two-lane roundabout presented, it is, it is displayed on the screen, and estimated cost will come out around two million eight hundred thirty-five, eight hundred twenty-five. The number of parcels to be acquired will be the same. With regard to funding, as a traditional intersection, the project is funded with one million four sixty-four with T-Splat funds. Anything beyond the one point four sixty-four, GDAC would fund at an estimated cost of one million three hundred seventy-one, eight twenty-five. Estimated construction of this project, she would follow Georgia DOT guidelines, will be in two thousand twenty. The action items and next steps here for this project in order to proceed with the design. The City of South Fulton needs to concur with GDAC, recommend, recommend a project to proceed with a two-lane roundabout project. The City of South Fulton max investment will be the initial budgeting cost for the project of one million four sixty-four with T-Splat funds. Georgia DOT would fund over one point four sixty-four, be it out, required for design, acquire the railway and construction funds for the two-lane roundabout as part of the state transportation program project. How do we secure the funds? GDAC would commit additional funds through an IGA with the City of South Fulton indicating that they will contribute to the project and that the city will not spend anything above one million four sixty-four. Typically, what we've done in Fulton County and through our experience is that when we go into those type of designs, those are estimated costs, and working with the state, I think it would be a big advantage for this, for the City of South Fulton to partner with Georgia DOT and let this project happen. That is with regards to the proposed two-lane roundabout proposed by Georgia DOT. And at this point, if you have any questions, I'll be glad to respond. Question back in, or I'll have Tom and Christina with Georgia DOT helping me out to respond any questions.
All right, I'll cover the next one.
Thank you, okay.
All right, I can go to the next project, which is only one she-
Okay, I just wanna make sure you're gonna cover that.
Okay.
Not now.
Okay, something with you.
Let me, uh, say first, there's a lot of conversation going on up there. It makes it very hard to hear, except as my colleagues, they would limit the conversation. So, if we can hear what the presenter has to say, uh, Ms. Gilley.
Um, well, first of all, well, thank you, uh, for bringing this to us. Um, I just wanna say that I've lived in the area for fifteen years, and this project is in District. And when I first moved in the area, the traffic was very light. And over the years, it has gotten worse and worse, to such an extent now that it is a nightmare. So, that's the biggest issue. The biggest issue is that Highway ninety-two should really be more than two lanes instead of four lanes. And a roundabout is not going to correct that, because people are coming from work, going to Douglas County and using ninety-two, as well as people who live in District Four in the many subdivisions that are on and off of ninety-two. And so, it makes sense to a lot of people, many of whom do not attend, uh, the meeting, that a light should be there versus, um, a roundabout. And so, um, to complicate matters, now we have the humongous number of trucks coming through. And if things continue with the development that's going on around us, there's going to be even more trucks, and there have been no movement towards infrastructure improvements for that particular road that intersects with South Fulton Parkway. So, that's a real issue in terms of a light versus a roundabout. That's a big issue, that's the first one. And then, the second one is, when we receive of this letter in our packet, um, it says that the T-Splash funds for one point four six four million, uh, would be used to fund partially the project, and that GDAC is going to, uh, fund the remainder of it, um, by twenty-twenty. And because it will take that long and we need to really move this along, that they're requesting Fulton County and the City of Atlanta to enter it to an IGA for the additional funds. So, your, um, presentation, you know, gave us, um, an estimate of what that additional amount would be, that's one point three seven one eight two five million. And so, my question is, you said it wouldn't cost the city any money, so who is going to pay the one point three seven one eight two five million and when? And why do we need an IGA? And why is Fulton County no longer in the IGA than it would be between GDAC and South Fulton? So, if you could answer those questions, please.
I would like to start, and I'm gonna bring Tom and Christina with regards to the traditional intersection and the roundabout. Through other presentations and meetings conducted with Georgia DOT, the traditional intersection failed at seventy percent, while the roundabout is required and it would not fail, it would sustain at a, at a hundred percent volume capacity. So, when you discuss that Campbellton Road perhaps should be widening from two, from two lanes to four lanes on the road, the roundabout that would be a dual, dual lanes will allow capacity at that point. So, with that, if Tom and Christina can help me out to elaborate perhaps better what it's, what the traffic impacts and the traffic studies down in the area, we're done to conclude the seventy percent and the hundred percent MBTC capacity.
Before you go there, I'm gonna concur with my colleague. I'm not an engineer, by no way, and you know me that I believe in roundabouts in the right place. I think their camp, their traffic calming device is their place in the right place, okay? Uh, like what we're doing on, on, uh, Butler and Stonewall Tail. But, I go down this road every day, and the magnitude of, of eighteen Willess and other school buses and other thing coming, I just can't see a roundabout being the answer. And most of the people who, who I talk to come to me, they simply want a red light. They simply want, I always say you can't do it, all right? But, wouldn't the cost be even, even more if you did a red light?
The actual cost would be about one point six four if we just proceed with a-
So-
Traditional, understand. The, the situation is that we will have to meet again internally with Georgia DOT, perhaps yourself and this, and the, and the city manager, and we discuss, how can we get, get it done and not do the roundabout?
That's the conversation needs to be had for me. How do we get it done and not go down to a roundabout? It's ridiculous. I mean, that, you gonna have stacking. You gonna have stacking in the car, you come down in the morning, uh, with those trucks and those cars coming out Douglas County, uh, those coming out Douglas County, turning left onto Cascade Palmetto. Once they pass by whole road, to me, you're gonna be stacked. And so, that's my, I would rather, Mr. Man, I would rather have that conversation as the one of our options, other than a roundabout to go at that corner. And I, you know, sometimes in life, statistics don't mean nothing.
I think council will-
Yeah. Sometimes in life, statistics don't mean nothing.
Right.
All right? Especially if you, if you're firsthand knowledge and you're driving it and we see it, I live there, he lives there, you know, we go down the street every day, and when I first heard this, I was overwhelmed, that, that the Georgia DOT, with their infinite wisdom, would propose a roundabout at a, at a road that's already heavily burdened, all right? And nine times out of ten, when round, roundabouts first come out, everybody started running into each other. They got to understand what the roundabout is all about. So, I'm just saying to you, for me, as the mayor, I would like for us to look at another option as opposed to a roundabout location. So, I mean, I like to hear from you, but I don't think you're gonna change my mind.
Yeah.
You know?
Absolutely. Mayor, you, you say correct. I mean, there's still room for improvement, but I don't think we're gonna be able to resolve at staff level, not at director level. It will be you, yourself and bringing it up to perhaps, uh-
Well, nobody told me about it. I mean, next thing I knew, we had a round, we talking roundabout. I had never had that discussion with anybody. And I'm sure that councilwoman who's in the area, Ms. Gilley, I-
I went to the meeting.
All right, you went to the meeting, you heard the discussion?
I heard, I heard the discussion, it was ridiculous, it was in December.
Okay, so, so this is what I'm saying. So, we need to drop back and talk about what's good for the community, and the, the roundabout at this stage is not good for-
Well, we got to schedule a meeting, and we'll go with, uh, the city manager and schedule a meeting for you to attend and discuss, uh, more detail-
And the district commission.
Yes.
And let's talk about another, thank you. Let's talk about another option, uh, that we can all live with. I understand that it's, uh, we're not trying to be the heavy, I'm telling you, community people are telling us they want a red light, that that would resolve our issue we had a red light. Ms. Willis?
Oh, Mr. Mayor, I, um, ran into the Georgia Department, uh, GDAC representative today, and I gave the information to Mark Bassi. And so, he is in the process of trying to get him here to do a work session, um, to address some of the traffic, uh, issues in our area, um, at the July twenty-fourth meeting. But, she was willing to come earlier, I mean, July, that's, she said July, but she is willing to come earlier, um, if that's something, if that's the will of the council. He would just need to, uh, communicate, preparing any information over to Mark Bassi. There's no question.
Mr. Uh, Mr. Manager, would you pull us up together, where we can meet and have the council, however you wanna do it? Could be that meeting that Ms. Willis is talking about, it doesn't matter to me. Uh, so, we can, we can, we can talk about what's the next step. Any other question? Or, Ms. Colleen, I'm sorry. Uh, please, real quick, just by show of hands, how many people in New-
Real quick, just by show of hands, how many people knew that a traffic light cost a million dollars and a roundabout costs 2 million dollars? I think those are things that we just have to discuss as community, because a lot of times people come and they, you know, they want things, and we should, we just have to have facts. And so, I just didn't want to let that moment pass, I did not know a roundabout cost a million dollars. Secondly, regardless of which ones we choose or is created there, I just want to be clear, are you saying that the city of South Fulton owes no money for the creation of these? We will not need to chip in any money for the creation of these?
Not at this point, because this is a T-Splash project. I invite you to go ahead.
Because what is it, you already here first, you don't owe any money, face that change.
Well, it doesn't mean you don't pay any money. It's a T-Splash project, but you're paying for it. No additional.
No additional. Any other, any other discussion? Councilwoman Rock?
Just a general comment, as we look at a number of these T-Splash projects, I probably could coordinate with our utilities to explore varying some of these lines that run across our city. I think they're a great opportunity to exploit as city manager as we proceed, and as well as public works, when we're looking to see if there's opportunity to bring some, update things in terms of our utility lines.
Great discussion. Khalid, thank you. You've got one more. I've got one more sheet presented here, and this is the second project that has also T-Splash funds in the Campbellton Road and South Fulton Road. Georgia DOT has approached Fulton County to fully fund this project. Should we proceed with a roundabout, I'm requesting from the city of South Fulton a letter of recommendation for them to proceed. What that will mean is that you will have about 1,4 million dollars that you can move to another project, and let Georgia DOT fully fund it, the project. That is the request. We haven't done much on this project besides some environmental work, some traffic studies, as well as some database collection.
Excuse me, Mr. David Park, Public Works Director, what I would recommend is put this on the same meeting agenda with check out that we're going to be doing, I think that makes more sense.
I would get started if I had to. Thank you. Hearing none, I would like that my colleagues in the meeting, we like to, you know, what item we're going to go, especially when you're going to take a picture and come back and do that.
Mr. Mayor, I agree.
Is that our representative? You just want to vote?
I think we have a lot of interest.
My suggestion is that we stop here and bring the last item back.
Mr. Mayor, I agree with Khalid, we do have a lot to discuss in the executive session, we're not going to be able to get through it in 30 minutes, so. We typically go to the executive session, don't get finished, and then by the time we get finished with our executive meeting, we don't ever go back into the executive session.
Let me take a consensus, all those who want to continue with the consent agenda is raised. Work session, I'm sorry, work session. Let's continue the work session. Call the next one.
Next, I have a discussion regarding city taxes and senior exemptions that's sponsored by councilmember Gilleyard.
The reason why I asked to add this to the agenda is because I've been getting an awful lot of telephone calls from people thinking that this is actually my bill. I don't know why I'm being, why I received the bill for more money than, and I'm in the same group too, why I received the bill for more money than last year, and why is, why am I being charged money for South Fulton on this bill? And so, I did talk to the city manager about this, and, you know, he explained that, first of all, it's an estimate. Second of all, Fulton County really should not have put ours on their assessment, if you will, and that we're going to have to do something different. So that's upcoming, and it will be a part of our 2019 budget, because we're going to have to deal with property taxes as well anyway. But I'm just wondering about the senior exemption and whether or not our city is going to have one. Some cities do, and some cities don't. I know the city of Atlanta has one. And so, so I would like to see various scenarios of this is the property taxes that we're estimating based on no exemption, and an exemption tied to income, most of it is tied to income, or whatever. And so, that was what I wanted to bring to the table. That's what I wanted to bring to the table. So the sooner, the sooner that we can get some feedback to be able to answer the questions of the community calling and asking, and all we can say is, well, we don't have that yet. And the person I talked to yet, I said, well, I can give you some feedback, you know, on Wednesday after we have our meeting tonight, but, so we need something.
Well, councilmember, I will say that we did host a town hall or some forum where some of these questions had an answer. And so what we've been doing is, one, referring people, because we kept it on our website, but we've also, and we also have a link on the website, not only to the town hall, but also the FAQs that Fulton produced as a follow-up. I would say that we did not know at that time that they were going to include that duplicate line, which really does not impact the assessment at all, so it's slightly misleading, but we have worked with the tax assessors office and provided notice to some of our citizens on that piece. I think we've gotten that corrected. I would hold on the conversation regarding whether we should have a senior tax exemption or other tax exemptions. I would say some of your colleagues have asked about other potential exemptions as well, so I think it's something that is great for us to look at, but staff will definitely make a recommendation as a part of the FY19 budget process. But it is, we have not finalized anything just yet, I just wanted to caution you guys on that.
Councilwoman, go ahead.
Thank you for asking my question. I know the county has put out those publications that really are comprehensive and they address all municipalities within Fulton County. I think it would be helpful if we had a one-pager that indicates what exemptions are available to the people who live in the city of South Fulton. I think it's easier because everybody did get the opportunity to attend, or they may not see the video, but it's something we could circulate to our constituents that kind of let them know, one, they have the law for the exemption, and two, what they are if you specifically live in our city. And secondly, I think in general, that I've got a lot of calls too about that statement, and even in my track back, my understanding is statutory that they were required to base it on last year, so when you add the two together, it's really the same, but it is confusing. It might be helpful to have a statement that we could put out on the website or circulate to our constituents relative and provide clarity. I think it would be extremely helpful, because I've got, and I've been stopping, I just called and stopped in the road for everywhere.
Yes, ma'am, I'll follow up on that, but I do think we put it up there on Monday, if I'm not mistaken, so I'll check and make sure that people working with our website ended to add that statement specifically about that. So if it's not up there now, we'll just follow up to make sure it is, and it'll be in our newsletter as well.
Councilwoman, Councilwoman Willis?
So, the statement that's on the website is, was for the city of South Fulton, a statement coming from the city of South Fulton.
And it addresses the, we basically took a statement that just highlights the receiving SSV and the city of South Fulton on the tax bill, just addressing what that means.
Can you share that with the council so we can make sure that we get it out to our constituents?
Yeah, no problem.
So, we had our meeting in the city of South Fulton, yes, it was not all attended, but I just also wonder, remind my colleagues, that the commissioners also had a series of meetings. And so I don't know what else to do at this point, because the commissioners are having meetings, stuff is being put out in the newsletter, we have meetings, I even have meetings in my district, and so, I mean, all we can do is keep doing what we're doing. If people don't engage until they get a sticker shot, then, I don't know, and then we're going to have a workshop, my commissioner at the end of this month, to help people form an assessment, I mean, fill out appeals. So to say that, you know, we're not having enough meetings, we have a lot.
I think what we can do again is just continue to make sure that we keep informing people with the items on the website. I think the best thing that we can all do is really refer people back to that very comprehensive information from Fulton County, and the reason I say that, I think we talked about it at councilmember Gilleyard's town hall, but it wasn't you, it was, I was invited to a town hall in councilmember Gilleyard's district, and one of the things that we saw is that when you appeal for the, if you appeal for the assessment, I believe, versus the actual bill, there is a difference. And those types of nuances are very important, and they're actually on the Fulton County website, and they have an accompanying video as well that kind of simplifies it. I think with them being the subject matter experts and it being in their purview, referring people to that information is very important, because it provides the clarity that we don't necessarily have the capacity to do.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. Why don't we just take a recess, ten minutes, 15 minutes? No, let's have a recess. We back at exactly 7 o'clock?